Good afternoon. I'm gonna call the April fourteenth Davidson County Commissioners Meeting to order. Uh, can I get a, well, first of all, let's start off, uh, Vice Chair Watford, would you do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please?
I will be happy to. Join with me if you will. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through your authority laws are enacted and judgment is decreed. Assist us with your spirit of counsel and fortitude as we serve in our roles as commissioners. As sinners, we do not deserve the bounty you provide and yet you share your grace. Pour upon us wisdom from above that is pure, peace-loving, considerate, full of mercy and good fruit, impartial and sincere. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion, we excuse Commissioner Mizell.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of veterans, Mr. McClure?
Yes. We have some ve- veterans here today. You got a veteran, would you raise your hand? If you've got one of our peers.
I have not, sir.
Well, you do now.
(laughing).
There you go. I appreciate you, bro.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
That all. I think that'll do it.
All right, thank you. Anybody wishing to speak for public address, please sign the sign-up sheet right over here laying on the table in front of Mr. Martin. Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Smith has asked for a closed session, uh, to be added for personnel for closed session, any other additions, uh?
No, sir.
Mr. Manager, no other additions, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Jason, anybody on the sign-up?
Uh, yes, sir, we have one signed up.
Uh, Alan Suber?
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Reverend Alan Suber, uh, Wendy's Fifth Street, Lexington. I stand as the president of the NAACP Lexington branch to share the needs of students, staff, and families part of the Lexington City School System, and the call for help fr- from our county commissioners to address their concerns. Uh, weekly many, many of our children, teachers in the Lexington City School System enter grossly outdated facilities. Our students are having to learn in facilities where roofs leak in classroom when it rains, constant repairs are needed to be done to AC units that work a percentage of the time, restrooms are constantly shut down, and many of the classrooms are outdated with not enough outlets hindering schools from being able to provide specialty classes such as CTE classes. In addition, because most of the facilities have outlived their usefulness and were built for a certain period, at least fifty years ago, the tools and gadgets need to repair outdated equipment are no longer accessible. Uh, we know that youth is a priority for our commissioners in this county, um, that was proven during a recent commissioner meeting with, when sixty-five million dollars were approved to go towards the building of a future sports complex that will serve our youth throughout the county. And so, uh, we hope that this future sports complex will be open and inviting to all of our children, both city and county-wide, for all of our children can benefit from a state-of-the-art sports facility that still does not address the primary needs of our kids in Lexington, which are newly functioning school buildings. Um, therefore, the NAACP is asking for our county commissioners to see school facilities, specifically school facilities in our city districts as our pro- as a priority in the same manner as our county schools. Um, we're asking for our county commissioners to see families who live in the city as their constituents and thereby need your support. Um, we've, if we wish to save our children from crime and mischief and empower them to be good standing citizens, as all of you have stated so well, bid us through our community and our elected officials supporting all of our schools in the areas of need. For our schools to help our children, they must have what they need to do their jobs: good teachers, good salaries, and good facilities. We implore our county commissioners to invest the adequate financial resources needed so our children can learn in a city school building that they can be proud of. Happy Holy Week, happy Easter to all of you.
Thank you. Same to you.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you may, I'd like to respond one thing to, to him.
Okay.
I know we, as a rule, we don't do that. Sir, I would encourage you to call Casey Smith. We have a lot of things in the works for these schools over here.
Yes.
We've got the middle school we're redoing, and we've got things on the high school that we're looking at redoing, but he can give you a complete update as to where we're at on those things. And also, Lincoln Russ, be sure to share that with him.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Care, I have that pen there, please. Thank you very much, all right? Let me know when you're ready, uh, Lee?
We're ready, sir.
All right, we'll move on to seven A, rezoning request by Roddy Hobbs in Cotton Grove Township containing five point seven, or point five seven, plus or minus acres from HC to OI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we do have a request tonight by Roddy Hobbs to rezone property located in Cotton Grove Township, tax map ten, lot fifty-two, containing point five seven acres more or less. Said property is located on the east side of NC Highway eight directly from, across the, from the Smith Farm Road, Smith, I'm sorry, Smith Grove Church Road intersection at forty-three fifty-five NC Highway eight. Rezoning is requested to change from that of HC Highway Commercial to that of O and I Office and Institutional District. Um, the, this board has seen this property a couple times in the, in the past several years. Um, if you'd please divert your attention to the overhead, this is the property in question in yellow, here's Robert Hedrick's supply to get you acclimated, NC Highway eight, Trantham Drive. Um, this, the last time you saw this, this property went from O and I to HC, as Mr. Hobbs thought that it would be the best zoning district for it, for the highest and best use. He hasn't really gotten any, um, I think he's trying to sell the property, so he hasn't really gotten any, uh, candidates for that, so he's trying to, uh, go back to O and I. His, um, Mr. Will Hutchins is here tonight to represent Mr. Hobbs if, if, when we open the public hearing, if you want to ask him to come forward.
Okay, he can come forward and I will declare the public hearing open. How are you this afternoon?
Good, how are you, sir?
Um, I guess you want to kind of tell us what your plans are going back to O I or what?
Uh, yeah, we, that was, we've just recently switched, um, realtors and that was her suggestion to, and we were trying to get the, um, property sold and, and that was just what she suggested that we do.
Hoping that would work, right?
Right.
Yeah, I got you. Any questions for this gentleman?
No, sir.
All right?
No, sir.
Here none, uh, if you'll have a seat there on the front row, if you don't mind, just in case we need you again, and, uh, anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition, you can have a seat there on the front row, thank you. Yep. All right, see you none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um, Mr. Crook, staff recommendation?
Thank you, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Staff's gonna support the request, this, this property being located where it's at on NC Highway eight can be either HC Highway Commercial District or O and I because it's kind of at the south end. Uh, the zoning is not on this map, but you've got Highway Commercial right across the street, this is Highway Commercial, this is limited industrial, you got some more Highway Commercial up here. NC Highway eight has, has been widened from a, a two-lane to a five-lane facility at this site, and, um, so change or changing conditions are present. Uh, Davidson County Land Development Plan Policy one-one-one-two-one-three-one-five-one-seven-one-eight, five-five-five-seven, and five-ten, I'll support the request and we would recommend approval and ask you to adopt a statement of consistency.
Okay. Any other discussion by the board? Here none, can I get a motion?
Motion.
To approve?
Yes.
And adopt the resolution on statement of consistency.
And he, ad- adapts it.
With that?
Ten second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Approved, sir. You're good to go, thank you. All right, rezoning request by Lester Construction Company Incorporated in Abbott's Creek Township containing three point two-six plus or minus acres from RA three to CZ RC. Mr. Crook?
Thank you, sir. Um, we have requests by Lester's Construction Company to rezone property located in Abbott's Creek Township, tax map eight, lot nine E, containing three point two-six acres more or less. Said property is located on the north side of Stover Way, approximately three hundred feet east of the Horny Town Road intersection at one ninety-seven Stover Way. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA three, Rural Agricultural District, to that of CZ RC, conditional zoning rural commercial. Um, because this is a conditional zoning request, I would like to, uh, let the board, I'll read those for the board before we open the public hearing so you can kind of get a feel for what the district would look like if approved. Um, Mr. Lester proposes, um, routine ground maintenance, mowing and weeding, gravel and gravel maintenance of the road, natural areas maintained, building aesthetics, clean appearance, design, uh, designated extor- exterior storage areas, designated parking areas, designated equipment storage areas, proper drainage to help eliminate wet areas, signage to accommodate addresses and location of areas, appropriate lighting. He proposes hours of operation from, of Monday through Saturday, seven AM to seven PM. Um, if you would please quickly divert your, uh, head, the, uh, attention to the overhead, the property highlighted in blue is what Mr. Lester's proposing to change. You have Horny Town Road here, this is West Over Drive, uh, Metal Muckies is, it located this facility here, Hedgecock Racing is here, and there's a, I think a flooring, a limited industrial flooring facility here. So, um, I would also like to, this is the site plan that Mr. Lester has, has proposed, again Horny Town Road, this is, um, Lester Way, highlighted in the gray, the proposed building is right, located right here, he's gonna have some employee parking and some storage around here, I'll let him elaborate on that. He's also proposing, uh, some screening along this area right here, uh, and I'll let him elaborate a little bit more on that once the public hearing's opened.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open. Uh, Mr. Lester, if you'd like to come up and...
Good job, gentlemen. Thank everyone for, uh, giving me the time to talk through this. Uh, basically, we're a small construction company, we focus on residential construction, and this is gonna give us the organization that our organization needs pretty much to, you know, provide to the public like we do, and I feel like it's something that, uh, is gonna improve Davidson County, giving us the opportunity to work for our customers in a more organized manner. And I plan on definitely doing screening, as Mr. Cook said, to kind of buff lot one right there, but we're also in the process of kind of getting everything ready for, uh, permitting and septic and all that, and we may end up having to utilize off-site septic in those lots, so we're gonna have screening, I just don't know exactly where it is, hopefully this plan works, but that might be something that comes back. Um, but that's the goal in all of this, is just to get us a facility to work and have our small company operating out of.
How many employees do you have?
Right now, six and a seventh part-time, uh, well, I say that, it's actually eight of us, two are basically part-time.
Yeah, full-time office, uh, person?
That's what my goal is, is I'm wanting in this facility to have our office space, uh, obviously a bathroom and break room for my guys, a small workshop as far as woodworking goes, we do a lot of custom projects and things like that, and the material that we store has to stay dry, so there will, will be some small material storage inside that shop, but very limited to none when it comes to any kind of storage outside other than my equipment.
I got you. Any other questions for this gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Not here none, if you'll have a seat on the front row there, uh, anybody else wishing to speak in favor and opposition to this rezoning, come forward, please. How you doing this afternoon?
Bill Stover, my wife Laurie Stover, we reside at two fifty-eight Stover Way, so we're the most direct impact, and this guy is of outstanding character, great company. This facility, this structure has been, um, going downhill for years now, it's, it used to be a, a garage, an auto mechanic garage, they used to make trusses there for the city of High Point, so it's been commercial, used commercially for, since the fifties, but he has gone in and fixed it up and it looks way better, it's improved everything around, so my wife and I are here to support this rezoning.
That's very good, thank you.
That's awesome.
I was afraid you was coming up in opposition, sir.
(laughing).
It's nice to see something go the other way every now and then.
Amen.
All right, anybody else wishing to speak in favor and opposition of this? All right, see you none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, Mr. Crook?
We do tend to cringe when somebody stands up, don't we? (laughing) A little bit.
Now it starts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, staff's gonna support the request, this, this area of High Point basically, um, is principally residential with respect to its development trends, but the so- the soils in this area are, are not conducive to large-scale subdivision, so the way that takes place is they, uh, they get permission from, you know, the, the Board of Commissioners, if that's granted, and then they get sewer and development happens at a very, very high density. There's still some county development, but it's at a much lower density with septic systems. Um, I did want, I did point out earlier that there are some mixed uses in the area, everyone's familiar with Metal Muckies, which is highway, I mean, heavy industrial, that's basically one lot away from Mr. Stover's track. This property right here is a Piedmont Natural Gas, uh, Station, you've got some LI in the area with Hedgecock Racing in the flooring, uh, section. This property's kind of hidden, it's back off the road, you can't really see it, and it's, it's a use that a residential community really can, can use because they do small-scale residential stuff, they do maintenance, they do things like that, so, uh, it lends itself to being conducive to a residential area. Plus, the rural commercial doesn't really follow the same rules that a, a larger-scale commercial zoning does like a CS Community Shop and or HC Highway Commercial, and, um, so I would, I would point out that we feel like with the residential development, we do have changing conditions which makes the application compliant with Article Seven of the zoning ordinance, and, um, the land development plan, I would point to policy statements one-one-one-five-one-seven-one-eight, five-six, and seven-four of said plan to support the request, and we would recommend approval and ask for a statement of consistency along with that.
All right. Any other discussion by the board? All right, do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, uh, to approve the request and to adopt the resolution or statement of consistency.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, good luck, sir.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Good job.
Yep.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, same to you.
Thank you, buddy.
All right.
That's kind of never you let there, right there.
Yeah. All right. Um, seven C, public hearing, Tefra, for bonds benefiting Novant and its affiliates. Mr. Bowers will inter- introduce this.
How you doing?
Welcome back.
Well, I hope you are too. Um, you might recognize me, I was here at the last meeting. Um, I'm happy to go back over the slide if anyone has questions. The basic request is that I'm a representative of the National Finance Authority in Novant, and we're requesting the county Board of Commissioners hold a public hearing and approve the issuance of tax-exempt bonds to benefit Novant and its affiliates for the purposes of one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code, it's federal tax requirement, and, um, the applicable law governing the National Finance Authority. The, uh, the big takeaway is these bonds will not be a debt of the county, nor will the bonds have any other, will the county have any obligation to repay the debt? You are the venue to hold the public hearing, which will follow, and then after that, there's a resolution that I ran by your county attorney and your clerk who've been very helpful, um, they were requesting it passed. Happy to answer any questions you all have or...
Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from Adam.
I'm gonna declare the public hearing open real quick, if you don't mind. Uh, I'll declare the public hearing open, um, all right, Adam, he's, uh, got something for you?
Have you looked over this, and everything good with you on this?
Yes, yes, I, I, I think that the, um, proposed resolution looks good, the, um, you know, we've, we've done this before with, uh, volunteer fire departments where, you know, this is, this is the, this designated venue where, you know, the public hearing is held, um, you know, and this- Um, you know, and this, we're not taking on any, any obligation or any debt here. Um, so, I mean, I feel comfortable from a legal pers- perspective moving forward. Um, there was a question last time about, you know, Mr. McClure being on the board of, you know, of, of, you know, of a nonprofit that, um, you know, could end, that would end up, um, you know, as one of the borrowers. Um, you know, I, I went back and researched the applicable state statute and, um, which is, um, fourteen dash two thirty-four point three. Um, and it, it, that, so this is a statute that would apply to someone who's on a board of a nonprofit. And, um, you know, it's a self, you know, it's an anti-self-dealing, uh, statute. Um, you know, and it, I, you know, I, I went over it carefully and I don't think that, um, it, it does not, uh, prevent Mr. McClure from, from participating here, but primarily because we're not entering into any kind of a contract or obligation. Um, and so there's no self-dealing. Mr. McClure doesn't stand to benefit. Um, so that's, you know, I, there's, in my, in my opinion, there's no reason for him to, from, from voting.
Good to, did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor and opposition? See you none. Any other discussion by the board? I do have a question for you. How many other counties has, uh, approved this so far, this resolution?
So far, we've had Pender County, New Hanover County, um, Rowan County, Charleston County in South Carolina has approved it. We are in the slideshow going before, by the time this is done, we'll have ten different jurisdictions approve it. So tomorrow's Mecklenburg County's hearing. Um, no one has turned it down so far, um, nor do we expect it. But, um, just to read it off so that you're aware, the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, Brunswick County, North Carolina, Charleston County, South Carolina, Davidson County, North Carolina, which is where I am today, Forsyth County, North Carolina, Jasper County, South Carolina, Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, New Hanover County, North Carolina, Pender County, North Carolina, and Rowan County, North Carolina are all holding a similar hearing and approval because of the facilities of Novant and its affiliates are located in the various counties.
And their location. Okay. I just wanted to know that. Okay. Ain't no other discussion by the board. I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. The resolution, I'll read the resolution. Resolution approving the issuance of not to exceed eight hundred and fifty-five million dollars tax-exempt bonds to be issued by the National Finance Authority for the benefit of Novant Health Incorporated. So with that being said...
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve, to adopt the resolution.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Eight A, consent agenda. Anyone wishing to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Yeah, none, none, make them. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Here none, that motion carries. Nine A, Department for Senior Service Advisory Board, Vice Chair Watford will lead this all.
Thank you. We have two appointments that we would like to recommend to, um, the board. And I didn't bring my, um, laptop, so I can't remember their names. I'm gonna ask, um, Tisha to, to say their names for me. She'll come up. And we feel very comfortable about these two. I think there were ten that they, they had an opportunity to look at, but...
And I think they re, uh, recommended Charlie Rowe and Mary Hester.
Yes, sir. Charlie Rowe and Mary Hester.
All right. So is that your motion to...
That's my motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Tisha. Who missed the motion in second? I'm sorry.
Vice Chair was the motion. I second, yes.
All right, Mr. Smith, if you'll lead nine B off.
Federal grant opportunity, is that what this is about? Yeah, I just want you to go look at what, I thought she laid out pretty clear.
Good job on that, by the way.
Kinda what was at the bottom of these email about what we could do and what we couldn't do. These deadlines coming up this Friday to be involved in these federal grants, various different ones out of, um, Representative Addison's office and Senator Tillis's office. If you'll look with your eyes at the bottom here, there were some questions and she kind of addressed some of these. It flips over to the next page. But, you know, building a library, she's, what she's stating here is the likely eligibility, um, what funding amount she has seen given, I guess, to a library projects, 'cause you can see it's a range, pretty wide range, actually. Um, whether there's a cost share and then kinda, she's got attachments for other things that I didn't get into a lot. The drones are there. You can see, she does say possibly eligible for that one and moves on to discuss no cost share, but see some CIS guidance. The detention center ironically is the one that it looked like from her notes here, where she was more confident about eligible under such and such grant. Here's the possible range. And the one that we, we're pretty much thought would be eligible that doesn't appear to be, likely ineligible, is the Lake Dredging project. And so, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you wanna do this, but one idea is if we wanna put all our eggs perhaps in the one project we may be moving more toward, if it is the detention center, then we can always, we know next year we, what kinda debt we gotta have for that project, what kinda cash. If we got it, got this grant that goes to that project, county money can always come out and buy drones.
Yeah.
Or something else of that nature. You know, see what I'm saying? So, I, I, you, I look at it more as like which one of these projects would be likely something we're going to do. You know, even if we got a five million dollar library grant, I think the cost of the library, say, in North Davidson was eleven million dollars. Are we gonna put up the difference? See what I'm saying? So that's, I don't know if we're there yet. The drones, again, is a smaller cost. And the dredging, unfortunately, was the one that she says ineligible. So, um, and that's the project. Uh, Chairman and I just had a conversation with Rowan County, uh, last week, and we're getting closer to having something to bring back this full board to discuss. But if it's ineligible, it's ineligible.
Who made that decision as ineligible?
I think she's basing that off these committees that they run at the federal government. It's my understanding from reading through this email. There's other groups. Now, you see where she says in here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the committee, I'm gonna ask the committee. Well, we're running out of time, 'cause Friday's the deadline. So, um, I don't know, uh, the whole answer, Mr. Shale, other than I think there's groups in Washington that manage parts of these grants before they get to the House floor or the Senate floor.
Do you think it would be beneficial if we contacted our represent, our senator and congressman and had them check into that committee and find out why?
It, it may. It's just I'm scared I'm run, I'm gonna run out of time.
When's your deadline?
Friday.
Oh, no, you're not gonna have enough time. It takes you...
And you can see her first...
It takes them three years to even ask them.
Yeah, you can see her first sentence of this is, thank you for your patience and, you know, I've tried to determine, et cetera. So she did the best she could do. But if we thought we were going to do something at the detention center, no matter what that something is, you can see the eligibility she's seen for these projects is two hundred and fifty thousand to one point one million. We know it'll be more expensive than that.
And from what we heard, this lady's like their grant guru, so she pretty much knows what's, what's funded and what's not, and what, what the chances are, so...
I, I think the library one would be a good one to, to maybe look into, especially if you were just going to do a renovation on one of our libraries. I know the top one that, um, that we'd, we'd like to do would be the, the one up in North Davidson area, but, and the welcome one, right?
Well, the, the problem with some of these grants is, is they won't, they won't cost estimates.
They do.
And the, and the detention centers ones, we've got bukus of it.
Yes, yes.
So unless we were committed to building a library, we don't have numbers. Now, we, at Facilities Committee, we've talked about some of the piping issues and the sleeving project. I could give them numbers on that. But you're talking small, it's probably smaller than the grant they offer, so I don't know that we're there.
Okay.
That's, and the dredging, I was, when I saw this email, I was like, so the dredging's out. So that's, you know, that really messes with what I kinda wanted to bring forth to the board. But i- i- again, it won't matter if we, if we thought the detention center project was gonna be s, anything we're gonna do to the level of two hundred and fifty thousand to one point one million, we go to that project and then county funds can come out to do any variety, county funds can be used for anything. Doesn't make, doesn't make any difference.
You don't have another one here eligible except for the detention center.
Well, and I asked her about a school project. I, I would be shocked if that wasn't eligible, but she didn't have time to ans, she ran out of time answering me, basically.
But the problem with the school projects, this is the way I see that, Casey. Um, I'm surprised the detention center will get anything, 'cause these are projects that every county in the United States has. Then they'll start funding schools all over the United States, you see? I mean, everybody's got a need for a school project. So, to me, I would think they would be leaning towards some things that didn't fall in the realms of local responsibility. But that's just my thought process. And like I say, when we gotta look at the dredging thing, I think we seen it the other day, the cost is thirty to maybe sixty million dollars. So that's gonna take some big grants from the federal government or the state, so...
And when she, and I agree, and I say, when she says likely ineligible, you and I both know we're probably headed to more formal conversations with individual congressmen and senators at a, at a, with a, with a report in our hand about this project. You know what I'm saying? It's not, we won't be entering some grant project for that, for that project.
No, and what we talked to the other day, just to give you all a little highlight in this meeting with the chairman of Rowan County, we're gonna try to talk to our senators and legislators from here to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, to try to get support because this is a holding basin for drinking water, for the PD River all the way down to Myrtle Beach. So it's not only gonna be our, uh, battle, it's gonna be their battle as well. So when the time comes to go to Washington for fifty or sixty million, all of us will be talking.
That's brilliant.
And the basic plan while we're talking about, since the chairman on court, that is take the dred, take dredge it down to a certain level and then, correct me, 'cause you know, Bernard, I'm just doing this real simplistic, take the dirt and make an island. Water gets rerouted, the pressure of the water will pick up the pace. It'll keep the, the, the silt moving. And, um, but that's gonna be at a cost. They could only give us a range right now. They're trying to tighten it in a little bit further. So our first, our first reaction to the engineers was you need to go get the Army Corps of Engineer on board with some of this before we start talking to anybody else. And then we all agreed it's high time with a report in our hand to start talking to Washington DC and our folks in Raleigh about this.
Chairman's right. The dredging in there will improve the running river. And that will also impact all the dam, dams as they go in from here.
Right.
And that's one of the things that we looked at years ago was make a, an island in there. Right in there where the tunnel is.
And it's, I don't know if y'all remember, and Casey had to rem, I remind, or I asked Casey and he did remember. I didn't remember. But we have an inter-basin transfer out of High Rock going to Catawba County.
Going to Catawba.
That's right.
Remember, we talked about this years ago, where they were taking, they, the state were taking water out of our basin and internetting to Catawba. Remember, we kinda, Chuck and I went to the DEQ, you know, public hearing, they kinda raised cane about it, et cetera. So the chairman's right in a sense of this is more of a regional project, 'cause it's downstream folks getting the quality of the water, number one, and just the, the fact that you're, that's getting stopped by silt and dirt and mud and everything else. You know, I mean, eventually people downstream won't have water if somebody don't do something. So we feel pretty good about talking to Washington DC about this at some point in time.
Yep. So anyhow, going back to this, I mean...
Just, uh, make sure I'm not confused, Casey. If you go down the list, building a library, we don't have the numbers. Uh, drones for law enforcement, my knowledge, we don't have the, the numbers for that at this point. Funding for the detention center, we do have the numbers for that. Uh, the lake dredging, I mean, that, that may not be our selection, but am I, am I wrong? There's only one that's eligible?
No, I mean, we could do the, the drones, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is if you got some grant money, look how small the average funding amount is for a detention center. It won't be nowhere near. But if you got it, you could put that toward that project and take your county money out if you really wanna fund some drones and then your county money go to that.
Okay.
I mean, we can do that, so, or, or we could do some...
You could take your county money and do anything.
Or do the renovations at the library with the sleeving project or s, et cetera. So, you know, whether we get this or not, I don't know, but Tim needs to know so he can put in for it by Friday. If that's the one, we, we've got plenty of numbers on the jail.
Yeah.
Plenty of cost numbers on the jail.
Yeah.
To give them, so we can...
That's the one, only one I'm really aware of that we're set on, uh, of course, there, there's said it's a change down the road, but that we're set on going on.
Right.
Pretty much.
Well, or, or something. We're gonna do something. Let's just call it that. The dredging would've been great, 'cause I got some numbers as of Friday, but it's ineligible, it's ineligible. So to me, I think you're right. I think it narrows it down to the one and we go.
Hey, you know, should we go ahead and throw the one in there from, uh, the dredging, just so?
Ha, just to see if anybody...
Just to see.
Just, just let it go?
Well, we've got numbers now.
Yeah.
We got, we got cost numbers.
Let it go through the committees. At least they'll know about it.
It might not hurt to put it on notice that we requested this, so when we come back, we can say, look, you know, we didn't know about the processes, but we need federal help and get it on your radar.
Yeah, and like I say, these same senators and house members.
Don't see it again, right.
They, they see it there and they'll go, we, we seen this, uh...
I seen that, uh, a lot of quality folks in Raleigh are okay.
Well, the only problem with that is, Casey, I don't guess we got a problem with the Corps, or we don't have permission from the Corps yet, but that's okay too, because we'll send it on up there and then if we got issues with the Corps...
Permission from what? I'm sorry.
Army Corps. Army Corps. This is a Corps project, but we'll deal with the Corps. Again, that may...
Worst they can say is no.
That may benefit, 'cause they'll get their attention.
Right, right. That, that may give us a platform then to go say, hey, man, the Corps is holding this up.
That's right.
We really need a little help with the Corps, you know?
When we had that, every four hour Corps is the one that killed that dredging.
Yeah, they all on board with it now.
They were afraid of getting mercury in it.
They all on board with it. Now, they've tested it and they say there's really no mercury or nothing in it.
Yeah, they said it was low levels of stuff at the bottom of it. It's just, it needs to come out, it needs to be dredged or it's gonna eventually fill up and there won't be no, right, nothing through there. Or water won't move at all.
And like I say, maybe, um, they just laugh at it and throw it out, but if not, at least it maybe it makes it through committee and some of the senators lay eyes on it, you know? So that...
Could be a home run.
Turning both in?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yep. There you go.
Tim, we got enough numbers on that and we can, we can throw some stuff in there.
That's brilliant.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Hear nothing else? Uh, do I have a motion going into closed session?
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Almost ready. Mr. McClure, if you want to just stand there, this ain't gonna take but a second. Uh, motion to come back into open session?
I'm moved.
Uh, any opposed? Mr. Attorney, update please.
Yes, the, um, board session, um, discussed one real property matter about a, um, potential land acquisition. A board decided to take no action on that. Um, second item was to talk about a personnel matter. Um, that was discussed and staff were given, uh, instructions on that. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.